Welcome everyone to the October 16th, 2012 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Item number one, Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council Sherman?
Here.
Council Lehman, absent. Council Clay?
Here.
Council Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tapke?
Here. Everyone stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. McNeil.
Mr. Mayor, we are working with the property owners in Valley Creek Crossing on their drainage issue. It's not ready at this point. If we could delete 10C4 and that'll be brought back in a future meeting.
All right, anyone from council have additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. Clay?
I'll move the agenda as modified.
Council Sherman, seconds. Any discussion? Mr. McNeil, would you please read the consent agenda items?
We haven't got there yet.
That was just adopting the agenda.
I'm sorry. I need to drink more coffee and not be sick. I apologize. So we have a first and second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Sorry about that. Consent business. Mr. McNeil.
Mr. Mayor, there is nothing that is needed from you as far as policy discussion on 10C5, which is the approval of the sidewalk and trails, snow removal routes for this year. If you'd want to add that, staff would not object.
Mr. Clay?
I'll move to add 10C5 to consent.
Second.
Second. Mr. Whiting? All right. Do we have motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to move.
I'm sorry. Do I need to approve that? Or do we just put it on the consent?
I think probably if the motion is made to approve the consent agenda as amended, that would...
I'll make that as a motion to approve consent with the addition of C5.
Thank you. Mr. Whiting?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. McNeil, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 4C1 authorized the staff to enter into contract with Schmitty and Sons Transit, Inc. for the Blue Express commuter bus service. 4C2 approves a certificate of correction to a plat for Valley Creek Crossing Second Edition. 4D1 adopts resolution number 7239 approving assessments for three properties benefited by the US1... excuse me, County State Highway 69 utility improvements. That was project 2011-6. 4D2 adopts resolution 7241, skips work on the 2012 Verling Drive Batumus Overlay Project 2012-2. 4E1 acknowledges the successful completion of a one-year probationary period of employment by Rachel Romansky and grants her full-time regular status as an IT specialist. 4E2 approves a job description for a crime prevention specialist position in the police department. 4E3 authorizes appropriate city officials to enter into contracts with Delta Dental for employee dental insurance plans for 2012, including a 3.5% increase over 2012 rates, and also adopts resolution number 7240 approving the city of Shakopee's contribution levels for employee dental insurance benefits for 2013. 4F1 approves the payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $1,521,316.33. And 10C5 was added to consent agenda, and that approves the city's sidewalk and trail snow removal routes for 2012 and 2013.
Thank you very much, sir. Any further discussion on those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone out there have an item that is not on our city council agenda this evening that they'd like to discuss? All right, seeing none. Item number six, public hearing, full-on proposed special assessments for 2012 delinquent refuse bills. I entertain a motion of public hearing. Council Whiting, do we have a second?
Second.
Same by Council Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Mr. Looney?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is our annual assessment hearing for delinquent refuse bills with our contract with Dick's sanitation. Your action tonight is to adopt a resolution adopting assessments for these delinquent bills. It's our ordinance that we have, that we passed a long time ago with our closed system. We obligate property owners to pay the charges and costs for the collection and disposal of refuse and recycling materials. And part of this is we cannot stop our service due to unpaid bills because we don't want that to happen because we would get more illegal dumping of material. So as per our contract, we can't stop service. Also part of that contract then is also to work with Dick's and assess the delinquent bills. And you have, we waited till the very last minute. We put a memo on your table. There were 111 according to this, but actually there's 110. There was one that was paid at 5:35. Didn't quite get onto the PowerPoint. But what you have on the memo on your table is 110 property owners, $28,312.20. And as part of our resolutions in the past, what we've done is we charged an additional $45 in the city to cover our costs in administering the collection of these bills. And Dick also has a $30 fee, which we are charging on top of this. So the total amount that you would be, including this in the assessments, is $35,169.18 according to the sheet. So with that, we will take any questions. And Dick does have representatives here to answer any questions on how the process works.
Council Whiting?
I have a question on foreclosures. How does the city realize that there's a foreclosed house? And how does that still get assessed?
If the... That has always been a good one that we've had to handle. If it's changed ownership, like if it's gone to a bank, we usually would still charge that as a fee. If it's actually been turned over to another property owner, then we no longer can collect that because it's a new service. A new service has been taken out. So foreclosure, if it's still owned, the service was there, but our policy is to assess the property owner.
It typically goes back to the banks.
Goes back to the bank then.
Okay.
And the key is with assessments, we are assessing the property owner, not who took out the service.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience to speak on the public hearing tonight? All right.
All right.
Seeing none. Council Clay?
Offer resolution 7244 adopting assessments for delinquent refuse bills as presented to us at the table tonight. Oh, I moved closed public hearing.
Council Sherman?
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Council Clay?
You know, I was just thinking I would offer a resolution number 7244 adopting assessments for the delinquent refuse bills as presented at the table tonight.
Council Sherman?
I'll second.
Same by Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, and this is our first meeting ever tonight. I'm messing it all up. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number seven, there is no business removed from consent agenda. Item number eight, I'll entertain a motion to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting.
So...
Council Whiting?
Move to recess to...
Oh, sorry.
I'll move to recess to Economic Development Authority meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Council Sherman? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. The floor is yours. President Clay?
Thank you. I'll open this October 16th, 2012 Economic Development Authority meeting. Please make note of the roll for us. First, I have the approval of the agenda. Ms. Sherman has motion to approve the agenda, seconded, I'm assuming by Mr. Whiting.
Yes.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 To speed things along, I would entertain a motion to add to consent approval of the minutes of September 4th and September 18th and bills in the amount of $1,801.10 for Kennedy and Graven.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Whiting, seconded by our good mayor and now director, Mr. Tapke. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those having moved to consent, do I do it? Need a motion for to approve consent? Or did we do that?
Go ahead and make the motion.
You just did that.
Yeah, we did that.
We covered you.
It is our first meeting. Is there any other business before us tonight? Are you gonna... We're good?
You're good.
Okay. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn till Tuesday, November 20th at 7:00 PM.
Seconded by Ms. Sherman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, we are reconvened. Thank you, President Clay. Moving on, item number 10B1, request for issuance of public building permits in Valley Creek Crossing Second Edition.
Thank you, members of the board. You have in your packet a letter indicating what the request is, and it is to grant up to 10 building permits within Valley Creek Crossing Second Edition. The recommendation from the Public Works Director is actually to allow the issuance of those 10 building permits, but no further permits until there's substantial completion as that was identified in the report. There is a representative of Valley Creek Crossings here if you have questions for them, and of course, Mr. Looney is here as well.
All right, so just so I'm clear, the recommendation from staff is to pass the motion?
Yes, to approve up to 10 building permits.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff? Council Whiting?
For staff, I would ask, what are the drawbacks to something like this? Could this project be dropped and left unfinished at some point? Or is this pretty well complete?
I can answer that, Mayor.
Mr. Looney?
Mayor, as member of the council, Council Whiting, if you look at the map that's in your packet, Phase 1, those streets are paved with curb and gutter. All utilities are in and tested, and the area is graded out. We should be getting an as-built grading plan very soon. And the water has been tested, so it's, the water operating plant should be coming soon. There is very little... The reason we passed resolution 6059 before, when we were in the heyday and we were allowing building permits, I mean, the builders were wanting to get in there as soon as possible, and there would be 10 builders, 25 permits going at once. The developers, contractors trying to finish the work, the small utilities are trying to get in there, and you have all those building going on. It was a real mess. Just, it was chaos. So we tried to put some orderly process in building so that we're not running into each other, that the subdivision gets built, the utilities, small utilities get in there, and then the building starts. That was the object. Further object of this was, I believe, we were supposed to look at, in the developer's agreement, the developer can ask for a certain number of permits, model permits usually, to go with their subdivision. Going with this, these 10 permits, it's going to take a couple of weeks to process the permits. They're in there with small utilities right now. I would say it's not going to be... We didn't want to go any more than 10, but I don't, I think it's doable. Otherwise, I wouldn't make the recommendation.
Council Clay?
I drove out there before coming to the meeting tonight and looked around. What is of this area that they're talking about limiting the 10 permits to in the northern section? What is left to do there to make it substantially complete?
All the installation of small utilities, electric, telephone, cable, gas, those that need to go in, and sidewalks.
So there's still quite a bit?
There's a couple of weeks of work there.
How many... Just one more question, Mayor. How many different builders are we looking at building on these 10 lots?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Mr. Kubish, please sign in. And don't forget to introduce yourself.
Yep.
Where you live.
I'm Randy Kubish. I'm with Kubish Realty. I represent the development and the developer. The development name is Valley Creek Crossing Second Edition, and the developer is Associated Capital Corp. There is currently, I just put a picture up of one of the streets that's completed, and you can see the corner stakes are in. And the reason that we're asking for building permits is naturally we're getting to the end of the building season, and the builders that we're working with have had pre-sold homes in here since early summer, and the buyers are waiting for their home packages to get started. Like Bruce was saying, if we apply for permits tomorrow, you know, it's going to be probably a week to 10 days before any activity would be in the ground, and none of the houses have been staked out yet, so it's going to be probably a week before permit applications start showing up at the city. And the Public Utilities Commission is working together on doing a joint trench for all the electrical, gas, or excuse me, electrical, cable, and telephone. And then natural gas comes in on their own trench. They have to be a distance away. And they're all planning on being in there, you know? They've made some steps in the right direction already this week. They say they can bury most whatever they need to in the three-day period, and then they'll be working on transformers and things above the surface. So we feel that they're going to be probably pulling out when the builders start pulling in. The two builders that are mostly going to be starting, and they're the 10 permit applications we've asked for, is Keyland Homes and Bill Ryan. And Bill Ryan represents two builders. So those are the ones. And they're already building in Shakopee and have a good reputation of doing a nice job, staying clean.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All right, I'll entertain motion. Thank you, Mr. Kubish. I appreciate it. Mr. Whiting? Council Whiting?
I'll offer a motion to pass, approve the issuance of up to 10 building permits for Valley Creek Crossings only upon substantial completion as defined in resolution 6559.
What was that resolution?
I don't think that's the one.
That's not the right one. Sorry. I just sketch. Yeah.
I think we... You're looking for alternative number one on the first page.
There we are. Offer to pass a motion approving the issuance of up to 10 building permits for Valley Creek Crossing Second Edition prior to substantial completion as defined in resolution number 6059.
Council Sherman?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just in Mr. Whiting's defense, under staff recommendation, it says they are recommending number two, not number one.
Right, that's what Mr. Leek was talking about earlier.
Yes, members of council, there was some miscommunication between us about what the recommendation was, and I was made aware of that yesterday. So unfortunately, did not have it in the report.
Had it right in mind, just not when I was reading.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we are going to hold off on items number 10C2 and 10C3 at this point. We're waiting for a couple of people to arrive.
10C1.
We can do 10C1.
All right.
I guess not having Matt here is just throwing the whole night off for me. Who knew? 10C1, ordering preliminary engineering report for the East Shakopee Industrial Area Sanitary Sewer Extension Project. Mr. Looney?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. What we have before you tonight is a request to start a preliminary report for extension of sanitary sewer on the east side of town, commonly known as the East Shakopee Industrial Area. Here's a location map and a parcel map. And I'll explain as we go here, but the parcels that are outlined in red, we did not receive a petition from those parcels wanting to have a feasibility report or preliminary report. The ones in yellow, we did have, the sanitary sewer line ends right here, which is known as 70th Street. The Blue Lake Treatment Plant is directly north of that. And this area is served by municipal water already, and this even includes the railroad. They have a building there that houses employees, and they are interested in sewer. So we did get, and I'll go through my presentation, but we did get a better response than we did in 2003. We did a feasibility report in 2003. Ziegler petitioned for it and paid for this feasibility report for extending sewer in the area. We did have meetings, we figured out the cost, and it was a system that consisted of a gravity lined to a lift station and a major force main, a long force main, I should say, not a major one, but a long one, back to 70th Street. So due to the cost and the majority of properties at that time were not interested. As we have gone forward here, the EDAC has identified this area as for economic development. By, if we did put sewer in the area, it would probably retain jobs that are there or maybe enhance jobs. We do know some activity in that area, and some of the vacant parcels then could develop. The area is served with city water already. EDAC also recommended an adoption of a SAC credit policy, which council did approve, and part of that policy, and that policy did include this area for possible credits. We did have a meeting last October with the property owners, just to bring them up to speed about what's going on. Their current system is onsite. They have holding tanks. Some people are on holding tanks because they need to replace their system. We've worked out with the county, just keep them on a holding tank till we can extend sewer versus going to the expense of another septic system and drain field. But we evaluated the gravity system and the cost, again, in 2003 for that gravity lift station force main, $791,000, about $7,700 an acre. At that meeting, we did present an alternative. It's a low-pressure sewer system, which essentially every property owner would have their own lift station, a little grinder pump, and pump under pressure into our pressurized system and pump it back to 70th Street. The cost of that would be quite a bit lower than the gravity lift station force main system. You'd have to have grinder pumps, service laterals, force main, and the property owner would own and they would install and maintain the grinder pump. The city would just maintain the force main. A lot cheaper than a lift station for us to maintain. This is a schematic of a grinder pump coming out of a building, pumping to a valve. This would be a check valve, which then, you know, would pump it under pressure, pump it into this force main, which would then pump it down into, eventually it flows into the, our sewer system. After that meeting, we did send a letter out, which is included in your packet, to determine, okay, how much interest do we have? We notified the property owners of the new SAC credit policy that could be utilized, notified the people in that area that the city's interest in extending sewer to this area for economic development, and we did receive more than 50% of the property owners interested in pursuing the study. As I mentioned before, from 2003, there have been several other parcels that now have deficient systems and want to, and that even includes the railroad. What we're proposing is that staff would do the report with some outside professional assistance as needed. What we're proposing is that staff would do the report with some outside professional assistance as needed. We would look at two alternatives, the city lift station force main alternative, those are higher assessments, but they're lower maintenance costs to the property owners. Consequently, higher maintenance costs to the city. The other alternative, individual grinder pump, pressurized system, lower assessments, but higher maintenance costs and higher connection costs, so to speak, to the property owners. Your, uh, action tonight is to, if you wanna move forward, is to approve Resolution seventy-two forty-two, which would order the preparation of preliminary engineering report with a sewer extension in this area. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Looney? Counsel Clay.
We're gonna be looking at both options and applying those numbers by the people affected?
Correct, yes, correct.
Kind of getting a, a feel for how much
acceptance or lack of, uh, acceptance for each particular one?
We did get back on the petitions, people would write, we'd like to consider both alternatives, or do a cost study for both, to see. Some of them initially would like to lower assessments, but then when they, I mean, a grinder pump is not cheap, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So, they're, they're gonna have higher connection costs, and then obviously higher maintenance costs. So, we would prepare both costs, have information meetings, see if there's a consensus one way or the other, obviously when we have a public hearing, you would hear that consensus. Um, for us, I look at no lift station, that's lower maintenance cost for us. Uh, the pressurized system does have some better advantages, but I think part of that will come out of the study. So, we'll be able to identify and do a comparison of each alternative, pros and cons. And, um, hopefully we can come to a consensus on which one to move forward in.
So.
Counsel Clay.
There's a possibility that when the study is done, the city will be in a position saying we, from the city's standpoint, we like A, and the majority of the people that would be hooking up, say they like B, and then we're gonna need to work something out?
Yes, yeah, I mean, that, I mean, the city council can order a project as they see fit. You could have a hundred percent of the people supporting the project, and you could say, no, we don't wanna do it, too high a cost to the city.
Yeah, that's a good option for, you know, an elected person.
That's not a good option for politicians. But it is, it is something you can do, you're gonna be the one making the decision. But what we hope to do is be able to, uh, inform everybody out there of the alternatives and come to consensus, and hopefully, um, we, the property owners and the city council will come to the same consensus. But that's something as we go forward, we will be looking at. Um, right now, from a purely public work standpoint, I like the pressurized system. But we would outline that in the report, why that's a better alternative, and, and sometimes I like to let my staff do the work. And as they can identify the issues better than I can, outline what is the pros and cons, and hopefully something comes to the surface that's crystal clear. But the property owners have requested us to look at both.
Counsel Sherman.
Um, in order to prepare this preliminary report, what's your estimate in terms of utilization of outside professional services?
Um, I've had quite a bit of assistance already, it's just a matter of, it's, I don't, I think it's gonna be minimal. It's not gonna be very much, it'll be a few hours here and there, just to see, are we on the right track on dealing with a pressurized system, that would be the first one we would have in the city of Shakopee like this, you see a lot of them around lakes, Cedar Lake has one. Uh, for the people around that lake, it's a pressurized system, they all have their grinder pumps, so we would wanna make sure that we're on the right track in cost estimates and, uh, maintenance costs.
Counsel Whiting.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Looney, uh, you said this would be the first pressurized system the city had. Does the city have any other, um, requirements or any other businesses that are required to have the grinder pumps and maintain their own grinder pumps?
I, I don't know of any, no.
My concern is that, you know, it, maybe a business is in a down period and they can't afford or have an issue with their grinder pump. And maybe it goes for a few days and we have some problems with that, is, is that something, uh, that the city would need to make an ordinance to force someone to maintain it, or, or how would that work? I guess that would be part of your study.
Well, that's part of the study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's part of, maybe some of that professional services I mentioned. How exactly do we handle this type of system as it comes in?
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, I will entertain, uh, motion.
See if I can get this one right.
Counsel Whiting.
Alright, I would, uh, make a motion to adopt Resolution seventy-two forty-two and authorize the appropriate city officials to obtain the necessary professional services for the preparation of a prelim- preliminary engineering report.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Say my counsel Sherman. Um, any discussion? I'd just like to say that I am very excited that we're moving forward with this project, thank you, Mr. Looney, for moving it forward, because it's gonna be a very good thing for economic development in this part of the city for getting this done. It is gonna be, uh, extremely beneficial to the city as we continue to move forward with this project. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Alright, are we, um?
C two and C three, we need to defer until after eight-thirty.
Alright, everybody catch that, C two and C three, we need to skip to eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty? It is after eight-thirty.
Oh, you can talk long enough.
Alright.
Yeah, that's not gonna be an issue. Ten C six, uh, discussion of winter parking restrictions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and have, uh, Mike Hollander, Public Works Superintendent, and Police Chief Jeff Tate is here too, for the discussion of this issue. Actually, it was something that's brought up at the last council meeting, that you wanted to have a further discussion of the winter parking restrictions. So, I, I have a very brief, um, presentation, I, I did include a lot of, uh, past memos and information when we did this in two thousand and one. We adopted an ordinance in six fourteen on October sixteenth, about twelve years, or eleven years ago, exactly. But we did that when we started looking at, as we had gone through quite a few new developments, we looked at what other cities are doing. Um, a lot of cities are not allowing parking on city streets during the winter months, or even year-round. And, uh, there was a letter from, at the time, Chief Hughes, uh, on, memo on, in regards to that. This ordinance has been in effect for twelve years. Um, we, uh, we do try to do a lot of education, the police give out about a thousand warning tickets annually to get people used to the fact, okay, your parking, you know, is not per the ordinance, so they give them warning tickets, and they've done so every year. The main parts of the, of the ordinance change, so to speak, is November one to March thirty-one, no parking on city streets except, and I didn't have it here, but it's the old urban Shakopee area, which we'll go into what's as defined in the Central Business District. From two AM to six AM. That's mainly the new streets, a lot of those new streets, no parking on that from two AM to six AM from that time period. The old urban Shakopee are streets north of Tenth Avenue, and where, and it's, actually should be west of Marshall Road, where parking on one side is permitted on an odd even calendar basis. Odd addresses, you can park on odd addresses on odd days. The odd addresses are on the east and north side of the streets. Even days, even addresses are on the west and south side of the streets. That's where some of the confusion comes, especially with new people that move in the city, is, you know, what's, okay, where is the odd addresses and on the odd days? But once we get the warning tickets, they get squared away, for the most part. Other parking restrictions that are in the ordinances are during snow emergencies, which is defined as two inches or more. And we do have snow emergency routes, which will show you, you cannot park on these snow emergency routes if there's two inches or more until streets have been plowed. The other parking restrictions that we mentioned previously, in the other areas of town, for instance, the two AM to six AM, if there's two inches or more of snow, and we haven't plowed your street and it's eight AM, you still cannot park on that street if that's your parking restriction. So, people need to understand that too. We do put, produce a map, snow emergency map, that I might put on the board here, 'cause it's a little bit. This is something we give, it's on the front desk, that we give out to people. But all those red lines that you see on the map are snow emergency roads. Those are city streets, not county roads, city emergency roads. Um, the, we also talk about, again, going back to the, the restrictions, that nobody can park on the city street from two AM to six P- AM, except in the Central Business District and in the calendar parking zone. Calendar parking zone is in the shaded area here. Everything outside that area, no parking on city streets from two AM to six PM, or six AM. And then again, we get into the snow emergency, which, again, on the snow emergency routes, people are not supposed to park on that, on those streets. If it's designated as a snow emergency route, most of those are on our collector streets, or to schools, or business districts, or hospitals. That's what a snow emergency, those are the ones in our snow, uh, and ice control plan, those are pri- priority area A. We open up the emergency routes first, in all areas that we plow. And then, again, the winter parking restrictions would remain in effect if there's a snowfall of two inches or more, until that street's been plowed curb to curb. So, the two AM to six AM goes out the window, so to speak, until that street is plowed. I don't believe I have any other items to present, but I think we're ready to take a lot of questions and discussion from council, but that's a brief overview of our winter parking restrictions that have been in effect since two thousand and one.
Chief, do you have anything you wanna say? You don't have to, I'm just.
I'll, I'll be quick, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think it is important, uh, Mr. Looney did talk about the warnings that we issue, and education is a big part of this, especially with two different zones, really, in terms of the, um, winter parking. Last year, we issued over twelve hundred, and that's a conservative estimate, uh, warning tickets. Since this, uh, ordinance was adopted, and we kept better track of how many warnings we issued when it was originally passed. We have never issued more tickets than warning tickets. We've always given out more warnings than, uh, actual tickets. Which I, shows that the warnings do work. And we are, um, very open to any, uh, parking variance requests that we get, and we get a considerable amount of those. There isn't a weekend that goes by where somebody doesn't call and say they've got family coming to town, around the holidays especially, and we understand, uh, what that does, and when you have a lot of people coming over. And I could probably count on one hand how many times I know of that, that we've denied a parking variance, and that's usually a motorhome wanting to be there for a couple of weeks or something, something like that, so. We've done a lot, we believe, in terms of education and, and getting out there, and, um, we're planning to do that again, starting November first.
Thank you. Just a little additional background on this, this is something that, um, has come up, 'cause I've had a bunch of people talk to me about this, and be extremely confused about how our system works. And until I look at the map, I'm extremely confused about how the whole system works, it, it it just seems to me that I'd rather have, personally, I'd rather have ordinances that are easy and clear to communicate to people, and I know there's method behind how we got to the ordinance that we're at right now. No, I just wanted to talk to council about, is this the best way to handle this, do we want to, I, I don't want anything to change for this winter, at all. I, it's way too late to do anything like that, I think. But if we wanted staff to talk about it, and for next winter, look at, I did a lot of research looking at other cities, and a lot of cities our size and similar suburbs have, if it hits two inches, all cars have to be off the street, whatever it is, those types of more, uh, snow emergency type things, um, where it's just announced that it's a snow emergency, everybody needs to be off the street, as opposed to, um, like last winter when it didn't snow, and no one could park on the streets, because we have rules in place that don't really make a whole lot of sense for the type of winter it was. So, I just wanted to talk to council and see if people would like this to be looked at, um, or if we are perfectly happy with the way the ordinance is right now. Counsel Sherman.
Um, I've had several people approach me about it as well, um, in terms of just being frustrated with trying to decipher and understand where they're parking, when they're parking, what the restrictions are, so. I mean, this map is a great resource, so I would encourage anyone at home that is confused to come down and pick up this map from City Hall and take a look at it. It, it is a very good resource, and do we have this on our website as well, available? Okay, so can access it on the website as well. Um, but being that the ordinance has been in place for eleven years, and the city has continued to grow, um, over the course of those eleven years, it seem, I mean, it seems like it's time to revisit and maybe think through how it could be, um, simplified. So, I'm, I mean, I'm open to giving that direction to staff, I think it would be worthwhile, because it is something that does affect everyone in the city, um, and it does cau- it has caused frustration among residents, so.
Got it, Counsel Clay.
I, I guess I'm wondering what's not simple about it? It's like, don't park between two and six AM after November first and March thirty-first. You, you don't have to figure out if it snowed enough or not, it's, doesn't matter if it snowed or not, that's the restriction. The calendar parking, odd even parking's, it's the old part of town, it's the old grid pattern part of town. And the reason it's odd even more than anything else is because it's the only part of town that has forty-five-foot wide streets. And all the rest of them are narrower than that, so. I mean, it's, it's not that complicated, it just takes some time, look at the map and mark your calendar. We're, we're never, between the, this time, it's the seven and a half years I've been on council this time, and the couple of terms prior to that, in the late eighties and early nineties, it, it, every year, people are complaining about parking ordinance in the winter, it's, you, you're just never gonna be able to make everybody happy, there's always gonna be some people complaining about it, but I, I don't know how we can get around that, it's just, you're, you're never gonna be able to keep everybody happy. And still get the roads plowed effectively and efficiently.
I don't disagree with you at all on that, that, no, we're not gonna be able to make everybody happy with no matter what happens, um, but that's not the goal, um, I would rather have, um, in my mind, so then it's very easy to communicate and makes sense, it doesn't make any sense to me not to be able to park on a road when there's no snow, I mean, there are, I mean, if we have, even if we have twenty snow events in a winter, or like we had two winters ago, closer to forty snow events.
I, I can tell you from my experience twenty-some years ago, when it was that these didn't go into effect until there was so many inches of snow on the ground. And we're talking about restricting parking overnight, so you have to go watch the TV and listen to the radio and figure out, is it going to snow one and a half inches in front of my house, or is it gonna snow two and a half inches? And do I, should I get up at three o'clock in the morning, go out and measure it, to make sure, and then move my car, or? It, it, it becomes a, a very, if you wanna talk comp- complicated and, and confusing, go back to saying, you know, you don't have to do it until it snows, and only when it's so many inches, and then, then listen to everybody complaining, and.
Alright.
So.
Counsel Whiting.
I'm just saying.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would be concerned with any changes in restrictions to the downtown area, 'cause I know a lot of houses don't have the parking, and so they do need to switch sides down there, and they have the room for it. Uh, I guess one of my questions, uh, for staff, uh, Mr. Looney or whoever could, the snow emergency route, I think that Scott Street by the old fire station, is that still necessary, some of those areas?
We actually, I think you and I actually talked about that. Um, we think we should remove that. We think we should remove that next year.
Just that little block, or are we talking that whole stretch on Third and the section of Fourth?
Scott, yeah, Scott Street was really for the fire station. So I think we would remove Scott Street from First to Fourth.
Would you change anything with Third or Fourth?
Third Avenue?
That section by the church, I thought, was for the fire station, too.
Well, we'd have to look at that, but I know because of Scott Street and the fire station going away, that we did talk about taking that off, but we thought, we'll just leave it on for this year, and next year, we'll take a look at it. Every year, we do look at our snow emergency routes and make changes if necessary. But that's one that we did talk about, and that certainly should be looked at.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Okay. All right, so I guess all I'm asking is that staff look at it and come back to us in spring, March, probably, April. Is that a good timeframe? And if there is a better way that staff thinks that we can handle this, it is a very clear, or if this is the perfect way to be handling our winter parking regulations, then we'll stick with this. But if there's an easy way we can communicate, which I think there is a better way, to present it, and we can roll with it from there. Do we have...
I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, I think we're two to two right now, as if they should look at this. Council Wyden, do you want to look at this, or no?
Well, I think we could look at it, and I don't think we need a motion to do...
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have consciences up here that we want to look at.
Yeah, we can take a look at it, sure.
All right. Very good. Mr. McNeil?
Bruce, it's your action the council needs to take regarding Scott Street.
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number ten E1, discussion of use of SMSC one hundred and fifty thousand dollar intergovernmental grant.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We, as the city Shakki, were very pleased to learn a couple of weeks ago that the Shakki and the Wachkin Sioux have granted to six jurisdictions in Scott County, including Scott County, a grant this year of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used for capital projects, which as a term, benefit city residents as determined by the city. However, before we get the money, we'd like to know what we're going to use that for. So we've put together a list. We requested you of council to provide us with any of your thoughts, and we also looked at it from a staff standpoint. We have a number of things, and if you look at those in terms of groupings, we probably can talk about signage. One of the things that we had always talked about a number of years ago is the fact that Shakki has a lack of highway entrance monument signs. We'd always put those in the capital improvements program budget, but that never seemed to get funded. At the time, we estimated about twenty-five thousand dollars for each sort of monument, whether that's brick, mortar, whatever we'd turn out, but that might be one of the alternatives or a suggestion. Scoreboards, we'll talk about it, both Schlepper, at the baseball stadium, and at the hockey arena, are getting near the end of their useful life. There's difficult to get parts for some of that. The Jamie Pauli has indicated about forty-five thousand dollars if we wanted to replace those. The last one that would come under that would be a changeable message board side. This would be similar to the one by the West Junior High there on Tenth Avenue, but that would allow us to send messages to folks on Seventeenth Avenue. The next major criteria we'd have would be grouped as trails and bridges. Memorial Park Trail is part of the snowmobile route along the river. We talked last year about the need for that to be replaced. Mr. Looney has an estimate of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that. We do feel, however, that this is something for which we could get some grant monies, and so for that reason, this would probably be one of those that we would not recommend as something to use the tribe's money on. We have three trail connections. One would be connecting South Bridge Parkway through a natural area, through a floating bridge to Wakefield Circle. That would allow residents in South Bridge to access the highway trail that goes along one sixty-nine. That's seventy-five thousand dollars. Along Twelfth Avenue, there's a plan to do a trail through the industrial area, which would go, again, from County Road eighty-three east to a natural area in the vicinity of the NSB peaking plant. That's about two hundred thousand dollars. So that would not be able to be totally covered, but would put a big dent in it. The last one would be a connection from the Sarazin Street Trail to the west along, excuse me, along County Road sixty-nine under the recently replaced highway bridge and into Memorial Park. That's one that you may recall, a couple of years ago, we had a fatality there, conflict between a bicycle and a car. That would be something that we would also suggest that you look at. That's seventy-five thousand dollars. The third, excuse me. The third of these would be communications. And these are ones that we would probably need to get approval from the county, or excuse me, from the tribe because we're not certain whether this qualify in terms of their capital projects. The first would be paperless council packets. You heard that presentation about a month ago, and directed that go back to the Telecommunications Advisory Commission. They're going to have a recommendation to you in November to partially fund that, but what they're proposing to do is about twenty thousand dollars short. And so this might be a possibility to use for that. The other part of it would be the city's website. You've directed that a study committee be put together. That's on temporary hold while we fill the communications coordinator position. But that was not funded. It's about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars if we're going to do that. This might be a possible source of funding. The last criteria that we had really fall into parks and recreation sorts of capital projects. The first would be a partial funding of hockey team rooms. As council is aware, that's one of the high priorities of the Hockey Association. This has been discussed with the school board within the past month. The numbers in your packet talked about it being somewhere between three hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The most recent estimate that I was able to get last week would be that it would be including some donations and materials, probably in the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. If you put the money towards that, there'd still be a gap of four hundred thousand dollars. You'd have to look at how to make up the difference on that, whether that could be done through a long-term lease arrangements. That might be a possibility, but at least at this point, this would be a start towards improving those. Two other items, one, Hubert Park. Derby Days has requested an opportunity for the city, or has requested the city, help them in terms of providing higher amounts of electrical services for Derby Days. Right now, they're having to rent portable generators. If that was in, and hardwired, it would save them probably fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a year. We've got some quotes on that, probably in the thirty thousand dollar range. Derby Days is working this winter to try to get some donations on that. This would be a way to front that, however you wanted to see fit. And then the last one would be a picnic shelter in Hubert Park. You've got the band shelter down there, but otherwise, as far as picnics or other events, there's really no covered shelter down there. We estimate seventy-five thousand to one hundred thousand dollars, depending on the size. Those are the ones that staff and you as the council came up with. You have to make a decision as far as how we want to prioritize those, so I'm open to questions.
Questions for Mr. McNeil. All right. Discussion then. Who wants to start?
Oh, wow.
Council Clay? And nobody knows who to start tonight without our designated starter here.
The thing I'm wondering is, do we have to accept the money? What we really need from the tribe is, isn't their money. We don't need their money. What we need is their, you know, is communication with them and their cooperation on a number of issues. I'm always a little bit leery when somebody's offering me free money, you know. My next question is, yeah, what's the cost? If we do decide we need to accept it, I think that one of the first things we need to consider, it wasn't listed here yet, I think we should consider using the money to buy permanent odor monitoring equipment for County Road sixteen eighty-three and Montecito Drive. Since it's their money and it's their odor, it seems kind of synergistic to use it to spend on equipment to, you know, keep track of it. Is that an start?
It's about the most cynical start I could expect, but sure.
Okay.
Just a comment on what you said right there. Absolutely no, not. We do not, we're not required to accept the money by any means. But having been working extremely closely with the tribe the last ten months, along with Mr. McNeil and Mr. Looney, Mr. Leek, there is an extraordinary amount of additional communication that's going on. We've had an intergovernmental working group last week, which I was going to get to in my council reports. But we are working toward a lot of really good things. And there is significant amount of communication and openness that has been happening and been working very much to improve the relationship and in everybody's favor.
So in that case, then, we should keep the money, but spend it on the monitoring equipment?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McNeil?
If I might update, while the rest of you are gathering your thoughts as to where we might use this. We have worked closely with the tribe. Unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be an odor monitoring device, like a seismic graph, that you can just leave out there unattended. However, we do have...
I'm thinking for a hundred and fifty thousand, somebody will build one.
That might be a motivation for those backyard inventors, but right now, we don't have that. I will say, however, the tribe is very interested in trying to find a way to resolve the issue because they know that they are going to be a neighbor there for, in perpetuity. And we do have a proposal from the consulting engineer, who actually is helping us on our garbage and recycling contract, to see if they might be able to do some additional work that would benefit both the neighbors of the city and all of the tribe. So I know we haven't had an update publicly on that, but that is something that is being worked on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Wyden?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's a great gesture, great corporate citizenship to give money to the local communities. I happen to work for a company that gave this amount to Savage last year. So it's a good trend to start to, to try and start to set going. But I think it's a welcome gift. I think it should be something that we wouldn't typically feel we could budget for. There's a lot of great things on this list we could look at. Some higher, lower, I think maybe prioritizing them might be a good idea.
Very good. Council Sherman?
My understanding is the tribe has given these grants for several years prior. Is that correct? And we have not been the recipient?
Actually, my understanding is they have a working relationship with the city of Prior Lake for some services that Prior Lake provides. However, this is the first time, at least to our knowledge, that they have provided this to some of the other cities in Scott County for that. So this is really kind of a first.
Yeah, so with that, I mean, I think it would be, in terms of what you're speaking of in the growth and communications and partnership over the last ten months, that I think it would be who of us to accept the grant. I mean, I think, otherwise, would be sending some other type of signal, which I think would be inappropriate. So I think accepting the money is very appropriate.
Okay.
I think that the type of project that it should be used on should be something that as many people as possible within the city could enjoy and use, which there are some good choices within this list. Certainly, the different trail connections. I know we've talked about monument signs a lot, and that's something that, they're extremely expensive, but could really help in terms of wayfinding and appearance to the city. So, you know, some choices like that, I think, would be really appropriate.
Council Clay?
As I say, I think Ms. Sherman might be thinking of some cooperative efforts that the city and the county and the tribe have worked on as far as improvements to County Roads eighty-three and McKenna and Pike Lake, as well as twenty-one. Mr. Looney could expand upon that if he feels necessary, but, or, you know, it's been road improvements, which works to the benefit of both of us.
The annual seventeen forty-two is certainly one.
All right, so then, of the things, what I, the first thing that came to my mind, I definitely want, I would like to see the money go to something toward park and rec. To go in that direction, I think it definitely should go to something with park and rec. And having a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, when we look at the hockey team rooms and dryland facility at the community center, if we were to look at that just preliminarily as a way to utilize this money, what, so the team rooms and dryland would be around half a million dollars or so to put, to build. We've got some folks in the audience who'd like to talk about it tonight as well. We have some decent donations that are ready to come in if it would happen, as well as after this was built, we would bring in revenue into the community center through renting out the dryland facility. Not only is the Hockey Association, the high school team, but other people would want to use the dryland because there are very few of them in our area. And then we'd also lease the team rooms and get money from the school district. So it's a project that would benefit not only the city by fulfilling some of our needs, but kids who are in hockey and ice skating and all the open skating time, as well as the school district would fulfill a big need because we just kicked them out of the team rooms that we were using at the community center because they're not sanitary to use any longer. And so I, if we did this just initial preliminary look at it, if we used the hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the team room and dryland facility, it would, we'd get payback on it in anywhere between four to seven years until we really look at exactly what the hard costs of everything would be. And then we'd be creating revenue, and I'm all about creating revenue, especially at the community center, for a, something that is not a need that we have. It would help with, a lot with our limited ice time. And I think this would be a really good way to get started on a project that would not only pay back, but would improve the future of the community center, which is what we're going to get to in a little bit here. So that's what I would personally like to use it for, is to get that, that project moving. So, thoughts? Council Wyden?
Well, I definitely see the value in putting it towards the community center. I think there's a lot of needs there. I think it would be a, definitely seed money, and I don't know that the tribe would want us to just put it into a fund saying, we need this fund to build, but that project alone may be able to take hold and expand with other donations and things. Because I think the community center is, we know the trouble we've had with that, getting the public's tax referendum money on that, and there's all the issues that go along with that. The problem with it is obviously, and we'll talk about it in our next item here, is that it is, and always has been kind of a derelict facility, and never had the capability of creating that revenue that we think it should. So I would like to see it more towards a senior center. I think that would, everybody's going to grow old, we hope, so I'd like to see it towards that.
Older by the minute.
That's right. I would like to see it in a fund for the community center. And if we don't have to pigeonhole it at this point, I'd like to just kind of leave it as a starting point for a fund. If we could do that.
I don't think that we can do that, no. I don't think they just, it's not that we have to use... I don't think they just, it's not that we have to use the money right now. It doesn't have to be used tomorrow or even in the next six months, but putting it toward a project that would have fairly immediate impact on the community, I think would be a wise move. From my opinion. Council Clay, you're looking pensive. All right. Council Sherman? Hold on. Council Sherman?
Um, so I'd stated before, maybe a little more generally as to what I thought were some good ideas. I would be very supportive in, just in terms of public safety, constructing the pedestrian connection on the south side of County Road one oh one and under the one oh one bridge. I think that that would be a very worthwhile effort. Again, in terms of safety and also in terms of the broad community being able to use that.
So that's item C, right?
Yes, C in the trail connections. And then with that, the other trail connection, A, connection in the South Bridge development from South Bridge Parkway across to Wakefield Circle. Again, I think worthwhile and very heavily utilized area that would be more enjoyable and used by many people, so.
Okay.
Actually fitting donation with that area.
Right. All right, anybody from the audience who would like to speak? Sean, you're up.
Sean Nelson, six oh three East Ave. I'm sure I'd have to fill out this.
Uh, is that it, or is it?
Oh, it's over there. Wrong notebook. I just wanted to ask very quickly. It's a very, very quick question. Within the confines of this grant, would you be eligible to use it toward paying off the seaside, city debt that has been amassing for a while and I believe still paying interest on?
No, capital improvement projects only.
Okay, I was just curious.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Jordan Olson, two four nine Mound Street. Um, I would like to quick, just give a quick, um, commentary kind of thing on this accepting money from the Shakopee, Shakopee Medwaketen Sioux community. With all due respect to the Sioux community, I think that them being a sovereign nation, us having absolutely nothing to do with their politics, I think that we should take that money and decide not to accept it because we are a completely separate entity from these people. And you know what? I have nothing against Native Americans, but they hang on to their autonomy, which I do not blame them for.
All right, we're not gonna get into a commentary on-
If that's the way it's gonna be though, we should just have our money and they should have theirs.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, council. I'm, I'm Mike Vogel. I'm the president of the high school boys hockey for Shakopee.
Don't forget to sign in, Mike.
I have to sign in?
Yes. Thank you.
For the past two years, I've been with the high school boys hockey team, president of their blue line club, the Parental Booster Club. Um, and we work closely with the girls program as well. And Councilman Sherman, you talked about safety. I think that the council is very aware of the current safety issues that caused the elimination of the team rooms for the players. So obviously, the high school program in this mark, in this district is growing, see different numbers. I've seen numerous articles in the Shakopee Valley News and in your own minutes around work that some of the folks that are around buildings and rec have proposed to this council and with work through multiple avenues of the school district to find ways for solutions to allow this community to expand upon its ability to grow the program with ice time. Economic development is a big portion of what we're doing in this community. We need to look no further than all of our surrounding communities that continue to add to their community centers and sheets of ice, if you will. To the north of us, Eden Prairie now has three. Manotankas uses five. Victoria has two. That they consistently continually run out to people as far away as St. Thomas for ice time. See, the ability to add ice here is interesting as a proponent, although that's not the issue at hand. The issue at hand is the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The team rooms will make a huge and immense improvement to the association, to the high school programs, and to the community. Having these players allowing to leave their equipment, not talking about safety issues, that they have to take back and forth. We have no other program that's high school program varsity that have nowhere to store their equipment. Do you understand that? These players' equipment come to them with school every day, either sits in their car or sits at the rink. Football has a dry room. Wrestling has a dry room. They all have storage spaces for their equipment. There's not even a place at the high school to store the equipment for the players on both squads. The ability to do this will not only add value to the program, it'll also, you have a multiple of new people moving into the community, numbers joining the program. You need to build for the future. Most of these kids are at the center part of town where this community center is. The schools are all around that avenue. The ability to put this money towards something like that would be extremely beneficial. And I just look no further than the donation itself. The tribe was instrumental in Prior Lake developing the second sheet of ice over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Council Clay.
Could somebody tell me about the safety, health issues that, up there that I don't, seemingly don't know about?
Ms. Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Guess mold?
What?
I said let me guess mold.
No, actually, um, the team rooms that we're referring to are not team rooms in any means. They're actually HVAC rooms that are part of the locker rooms of the community center. And they're fairly large. The one off of one of the locker rooms is significantly larger than the other one, is which the boys team had used and the girls team used the smaller one. But they are mechanical rooms. There is no ventilation. They were allowed to be used by the high school teams way back when the community center first opened as a space to, mainly as a coach's room and to store some extra equipment. The boys team had stored all of their hockey equipment there for quite a while and then had some breakouts of, from rashes because the equipment just can't dry out. We don't have the right ventilation in those rooms because it wasn't built for that. So I don't know exactly what year it was, but the boys' coaches at that time had made the choice not to allow their equipment to stay there, so they used it more as a jersey storage room, coach's room, meeting area. There was extra pucks and that sort of thing in there. They, they used that for the main storage area, but the kids, the boys still brought their equipment for many years back and forth. The girls, up until this last spring, had kept their equipment there, and we've had numerous outbreaks of rashes as well there, just from the non-drying out of the equipment. The city has gone with the MUSA or the, our safety contractor that we, and they do it like OSHA check each year. It's been a few times that they have come through the community center and looked at those rooms and have indicated that they're not to be used as storage room, that they're HVAC rooms and need to be cleared out for the most part. We had a new gentleman this last year who really stressed it and wrote a letter to us saying that we need to get that equipment out, so we followed that direction based on the last outbreak that we had to in the girls and have asked the school districts to vacate those to HVAC rooms that were team rooms. So at this point, there is no storage. We do allow the parents to come and drop off the equipment before school if they want to. They leave it in the, the general locker rooms. But it's not in a specific locked locker room for them, which these would be.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, is there anybody else wanting to speak? Mr. Hallett?
Thinking about just making a stamp. Todd Hallett, um, I'm president of Shakopee Youth Hockey. I've spoken a few times in front of the city council. I'm here a couple, just a couple other additional notes on this. Recently, I, I attended a, a school board work session on the same topic, and I know there's some people that say it's a, it's a school district issue or it's a city issue, but the conversation that I've had, it, it once again is one of those opportunities, and I, and I've been in the paper a couple times saying this, is once again that there's an opportunity here for the city, the school district, and the youth programs kind of work together, potentially build someone, build something and, and move, you know, add something to the community center, give something back to the youth. And I just want to give you some numbers that I don't think I shared with you the last time I spoke in front of the city council, because they've all become apparently clear to me over the last three or four months. And the most telling one is the fact that we've lost, I've signed twelve waiver forms this year. And what a waiver form is, it's when a kid or a family lives inside the city of Shakopee, go to, can go to school in the city of Shakopee that says, I want to go somewhere else because I want to play hockey somewhere else. I've signed twelve of those this year. Last year I signed two. Nine of those twelve were from families that were either in sixth grade or older saying, we've had enough, we're going somewhere else. Now, does that sound like a lot in comparison to all the kids that go to school here? No. But it's a beginning, and it was something I was really afraid of a couple years ago when we lost the referendum. Eventually, they're gonna go somewhere else. Does it matter? And I've asked the school board that. Does it matter that the youth and the families are going someplace else? And if it doesn't, let's just tell them that it doesn't matter. This is what we have and this is what we're gonna go with. But I continually, and people before me continually ask this question. Either save, we're not a hockey town, and let them move on, or we need to invest. Additionally, if you're looking for opportunities to invest, you have over five hundred youth, youth hockey employers that would use this, that's high school and youth programs, and about three hundred families that would also use it, that would use it on a weekly basis. And then finally, the one thing I offered before and I'll offer again, we'll pay for it. We'll offer, you know, either hourly or annual lease fees, and we'll also prepare to contribute a substantial amount for the use of the construction or the equipping of this facility too. So at the end of the day, we're trying to put some skin in the game, and I hope you would strongly consider this project.
Before he goes-
Council Clay.
You also mentioned about some monies that you had for the equipment rooms and stuff that we're talking, and dry practice.
Dryland.
Dryland.
Yep.
We're looking at how much money?
For us?
I mean, for the cost to do those things compared, you know, and then we have a hundred and fifty maybe here and you had five hundred thousand.
We've actually have worked with a few of our, our, my board members. We have some contacts. We also have George Mix, who's from FabCon, a senior director over there of engineering that's willing to donate some of the, some of the panels for the construction of this. We prepared some of the construction estimates. What we're trying to do is, I mean, we're prepared to not only lease, I mean, we already made the offer of ten thousand dollars a year. We're prepared to go up from that, but we're also prepared for about approximately fifty thousand dollars to put towards, what we would like to put towards the equipping of the dryland facility. So the construction costs will basically prepare the room, but then you actually have to put stuff into the equipment, you know, stations and things like that. So we would like to be part of actually equipping that, then ironically, we would actually be paying to use the stuff that we would donate. So we've been preparing, um, funds for a second sheet for some time. We've think, and I'm very confident our board would approve this, of actually using this for this project.
So the, the cost would be about how much?
The cost of what?
The, the equipment rooms and the, the dryland.
Right now, um, the total construction estimates that we had, now this is also something that we feel it's on the high end after talking to a handful of people, is six hundred and fifty thousand. That's for a two-story, two or four hockey team rooms with the dryland on top of it. And then about a hundred thousand dollars for the panels that potentially, that would be donated from FabCon to bring the cost to about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to basically build the structure. And then we would donate the, the funds for equipping the dryland facility, and hopefully the high school programs would help fundraise for equipping the locker rooms, and then we're prepared to actually lease the dryland facility back during the season at an appropriate rate. And I believe the high school program would also be looking to not only lease the hockey team rooms, but also the dryland facility.
Okay, so it's five hundred and fifty to build it. Let's not even worry about equipping it yet. To build it minus a hundred and fifty, that leaves us with four hundred thousand dollars that needs to come from somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay.
If this is something that council is willing to look at, I would say we should do is take our top three or four things and send it back to staff and have that come back to us first meeting in December, somewhere in that timeframe.
With more information.
With more information as to how it would all work and that kind of thing, is that? Do, so what we've got so far are trail connections, A, and C, um, and item number four, partial funding of hockey team rooms. Is there any other of these items that council members would like to have more information on for this purpose?
Council Whiting had talked about senior centers. Is that the third one?
Well, I think that would, we could take a look at that too as part, part of the process, but I think it needs to be in the conversation.
You had referenced three.
Um, I was, I was, A was one, uh, trail A was one, trail C was one, and four, item number four was the third one, was where I was at. But that works. All right, anything else? Council Sherman?
Um, I just have a question. I guess I'm not sure who to direct it to. But being that this hundred and fifty thousand dollars in relation to the hockey project has just come up in the last three weeks, why is that a game changer at this point in time and what were the plans prior to that in terms of pursuing these plans that are obviously in the works? You know, I guess I just want to understand that.
This has been, since the referendum, at least from my perspective, this, the team rooms and dryland facility has been kind of percolating in the background, and when Mr. Hallett came to speak to us about Enigma and using that, and that was fairly roundly turned away, they looked at other options and started looking at other ways to get something that would work, that would fit their needs, fit the high schools' needs, and get more things accomplished for everybody. And so they took it on themselves to spearhead the project. Ms. Polly, Mr. McNeil and I were with the school board when they were talking about it a couple weeks ago. The same exact ideas as to what, how we can get something accomplished and just continue to move forward a little bit on, little by little on things. And then this money became available. And I think it would be very good for moving in that direction. So that's where this came from. They've been working on this. Is, anything you'd like to add to that?
The one other piece that has surfaced in the last six months is the limited amount of storage facility that they had at the ice arena for the high school programs have been taken away. So a program that has very limited resource, we're going backwards, and so that created a sense of urgency from both sides that, you know, the, the high school hockey parents and the school district have, have been talking and say, we need to solve this somehow. And so between the school district, the city council, working with the park and rec department, and obviously Shakopee Youth Hockey, a lot of conversations, and we feel this is one of those ones that the timing might be right and the need is certainly right.
All right, any other questions? Does that help you out, Mr. McNeil? Do you need any other direction?
From what I understand, you want more information to be brought back first meeting in December?
Yes, sir. Is that a good enough timeframe?
Yeah.
You can say no.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Um, all right. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here. Oh, yes?
Is this point closed or can I still?
Point is mostly closed, but go on up to the micro, the microphone.
My name is Beth Strand. I live at nineteen eighty-seven Greenway, and I just wanted to voice in, I don't know how the whole process works, but I have three children. We moved to Shakopee because we love the environment, we love the schools. And yes, two of my children are in hockey, another child is not. I feel sports is a very important thing, and I would highly strongly go with the parks and rec, something within there. With our technology advancing so fast, the kids are playing video games, I think you need a balance of sports along with the education in order to grow as an individual, as a child, and as a community. And I think Shakopee has a lot of kids in the community. I think we need to focus on that parks and rec. One of my children is going into high school hockey. I can't even believe that there is no, with all of the other sports, having facilities, why does not hockey? And it's just not about hockey. It's about fairness within the community, fairness within, um, And it's just not about hockey. It's about fairness within the community, fairness within the, the sports community. I love Shakopee and I just think it should go somewhere towards the park and rec.
Perfect. Thank you, Beth. Could you make sure to sign in an address there too? Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody being here and talking about this tonight. Do we want to go back to these now? Mr. Cromie's here?
Yes.
All right. We are going to backtrack in our agenda to AC, 10C2, sorry. Approval of Veerling Drive, 17 and 17 North Ramp trunk highway, 169 intersection improvement layout. Mr. Cromie, welcome back.
Where were you?
Where was I?
Yeah, you're, you're late.
Just being a good parent.
Oh, being a good parent. Like that's going to get you anywhere.
Okay.
Every time I touch that.
Yeah. There we go. Okay, Mayor and Members of the Council, the next two items go kind of hand in hand. And just a brief introduction, we want to do an intersection layout approval of County Road 17 and Veerling Drive, a project that we underdesigned. And with that, if you were, if you approve a resolution 7245 to move forward, then we'd ask you to consider an extension agreement for us to do right-of-way acquisition in order to keep this project on track. Chris Cromie is our project engineer and designer for this project and he'll update you on the progress and where we're at.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bruce. Mayor and Council, thanks for having me back. Want to talk about the, the County Road 17 and Veerling Drive project. This, as you know, is a, a project that the city partnered with Scott County on to address some safety issues at the intersection. City was fortunate enough to secure about 1.1 million dollars in federal safety dollars to address those, those crash issues. Total cost of project is, is in the 1.25 to 1.1.5 million dollar range, with the city and county splitting the additional cost. Real briefly to refresh your memory of why, why we're here, why we're doing a project. There are a number of, of issues out there. I'll narrow it down to really two, two issues. First, just some background, Marshall Road through this intersection carries about 25,000 vehicles per day. Veerling Drive west of Marshall carries about 17,000 vehicles per day. East of, east of Marshall Road, about 7,000 vehicles per day. So it's a very busy intersection. In a three-year timeframe, there were 44 crashes at this intersection. Which is, which indicate, which is the highest crash location in the city of Shakopee.
Was that 44 over three years?
It's 44 total crashes in three years.
Thank you.
Of those crashes, 30 were rear end crashes. 14 of those rear end crashes were on northbound 17. The, one of the two primary issues that we see and that we hope to address here is the left, the northbound left turn to westbound Veerling Drive. This is a heavily used movement throughout the day. It often fills up with vehicles stacked at the red light. And at times backs up into the through traffic, creating a, a fairly unpredictable situation. We think that that condition is attributing to some, some of those 14 rear end crashes on northbound. Second problem we hope to address is a similar issue on the exit ramp from US 169 westbound or southbound. That left turn also is a very heavy movement to go southbound on 77 and often stacks up, fills that ramp, creating a fairly hazardous condition with stopped vehicles near the high-speed traffic on 169. So additional considerations with our project on Veerling Drive. There is a lot of traffic on Veerling Drive, 17,000 vehicles per day, which is a good thing. The reason it's there is there's a thriving business community there. There's a lot of attraction there. The reason the business community is there is a lot of traffic there, that there's a big part of Shakopee access, accesses the regional highway system, 169 near this location. There's also very compact land use and intersection spacing is very close on, particularly on Veerling Drive, which makes traffic management pretty challenging. So we're looking for, to create a more, more efficient and more predictable ways of moving traffic on Veerling Drive as well as through the 17 intersection, namely at Tasha Boulevard. On the east side, here we have less traffic at this time. But as we are preparing our intersection improvements at 17 and Veerling, we are certainly taking into consideration the potential for another high-traffic generating business locate, to be located in the, in the vacant Kmart Rainbow Foods building. We think the, the improvements that we are making can accommodate additional traffic from the east. And staff has indicated that they will work with potential developers of that site to improve access to it from Veerling, from Veerling Drive. So it's a more attractive, more attractive site and can move traffic safely and efficiently. We are, in our initial study, we looked at a number of different approaches to addressing this, of the safety problems and capacity issues here. And we developed a three-tier approach. Short, short-term improvement. What I would consider low-hanging fruit is how we can use the existing infrastructure, infrastructure better. And I'll talk briefly on that. The interim improvements, which is the project that we have funded for 2014. And then the long-term, not losing sight of the long-term needs, realizing that our interim improvements will probably get us 10-plus years of, of improvements, improved operations, improved safety. But with the growth of the area, we expect traffic volumes to, the issues to reappear in that 10-year timeframe. We did have some public input opportunities. We held an open house, the Country Inn and Suites on June 14th. It was, it was well-attended by the business community and, and many residents as well in the area, got some very good input. In addition to that, we did, Bruce and I did meet individually with several of the property owners, property managers, business managers in the businesses in that area and gathered additional input. Just a general sentiment, clearly opinions vary based on who you talk to. But general sentiment, there, there is a recognition that there is needs for improvements out there. They, they recognize that the queuing issues are there, the stacking issues are there. So they support the need, the need for improvements. We did hear that maintaining the left turn access at Tasha Boulevard is important to the, to the business community. We did also notify many of the people who signed up for our email blast on the project that we were having the presentation here tonight. And we will continue to have public input opportunities, planning on open house potentially for December to look, again, to look at the improvements and again, move into the process of design and getting ready for construction. So long, long-term improvements, as I mentioned, the, the short-term interim improvements are expected to provide benefits up through about 10, 10 years, 10-plus years, depending on how traffic grows. We recognize that there, there may be some better solutions out there. We think that these are higher-scale solutions that may include modifications to the interchange itself. Some of you may remember in the 2008-17 corridor study, one of the recommendations was to expand the segment of 17 to six lanes, three lanes each direction. So that would be considered a long-term improvement. We feel those, those improvements aren't justified at this time due to cost impacts. And I think the input that we've received from the business community supports that. The short-term improvements, I'm happy to say we, we have completed those. This past summer, MINDOT traffic staff did some re-timing of the traffic signals to better coordinate the, the signal operation. Prior to this year, those four traffic signals on 17 operated pretty much independently of one another. They did adapt to, to traffic conditions, so they were working okay. But they weren't necessarily communicating, they weren't necessarily timed so that when you get one, when you get a green at one intersection, you're, you can proceed on through. And so that's what, that's the way they're set up today. MINDOT will continue to monitor that. I know city staff and some of the, has received some input and passing along to MINDOT on how things may, may still be tweaked. But there has been improvements achieved there. So on to the interim improvement, the 2014 project. What we expect to do with this project is to really hit those two main issues head-on. We are proposing to widen the Highway 17 by three to four feet. Narrow the lanes by one foot, for each lane by one foot in order to add an additional northbound left turn lane to Veerling Drive. How we do that is really what we are here to talk about tonight. This option includes a reconstruction and widening of the northbound lanes. It would widen, it would widen to the east to get the additional width necessary for that left turn lane. In addition, it does add a third lane on the exit ramp from US 169. That third lane would be an exclusive right turn lane. It would enable get right-turning vehicles out of the queue from the red light and would allow right turn on reds if the gaps are there. It would also enable more efficient use then of the existing two lanes as primarily double-left turn lanes to the south. So we'd move more cars through in about the same or, or less green time at the traffic signal. Uh, the west widening option really achieves the same thing. It adds the, the additional northbound left turn lane, adds the additional westbound exit lane from 169. In this case, it widens to the west. Uh, so it would move the southbound lanes west in order to get the additional three to four feet of width on Marshall Road. In addition, what we are recommending at the Tasha Boulevard access, our intersection location. Currently today, this is what we call a full three-quarter access where it allows right-in, right-out and left-turn in only. And there is a small median located there to restrict movements. For westbound traffic, we expect the movements to be the same. For a westbound right turn to Tasha, which would bring you over to the Caribou Coffee, you know, the other stores over there. What we're proposing to is to extend that right turn lane. The right turn lane currently only goes into a private driveway to Walgreens. We plan to extend that up to Tasha Boulevard and remove some of the confusion that that causes in drivers. The westbound left turn lane over to Super America in the Wells Fargo Bank area. That too will remain open to traffic. And we are proposing to have that under traffic signal control. Not to restrict that left turn, but actually to, to have the ability to stop eastbound traffic and make that left turn free-flow in. One of the critical items that, that we have a concern about with the closed proximity of the intersections on Veerling Drive, adding that northbound double-left over to Veerling Drive, we need to have two clear lanes for that, those, for that traffic to get into. And so signaling the left turn into Tasha Boulevard to the south enables us to do that. It'll be timed such that when that, when the flush comes from, from Marshall Road, this location will be flushed out as well. For eastbound, we are proposing a closure of the left turn lane. It would remain right-in, right-out. Primarily because the, adding the, including the left turn lane there would complicate the traffic signal operations. We don't want to have to stop westbound traffic for a, a left turn. We feel that, we feel that the, those left turns can be adequately served at the Heather Street inter, signalized intersection. And due to the light volume of, of traffic, we feel most of those left turns are already being made at the Heather Street intersection. So the east and, east versus west option, as I mentioned, you're really achieving the, the same benefits at relatively the same construction costs. What we feel we need to do is evaluate the risk and, and what we're incurring by choosing one option over the other. Both options will require some grading outside of the existing right-of-way and need for easements. The east option, the east widening option includes two properties. The impacts outside of the right-of-way are limited to grading within the green space. The risk for other impacts to the business activity such as business interference, signing, that type of thing is, is fairly minimal with the east widening option. We really think this is a, we're going to cut the grass down, probably a foot, cut the hillside back a bit, bring the grass back. No impact to parking lots. The west option, that widening option would also impact two properties. We think there's higher risk with this one because it would require permanent easement versus a temporary easement. So the, the settlement and the acquisition, there's greater variability, greater variability when you're acquiring a, a permanent easement. Other differentiators between the east versus west. The east widening option does enable us to provide a six-foot or greater boulevard space along the sidewalks and trails on 17. The west widening option, there along the right, southbound right turn lane, we would be stuck with a very narrow boulevard with the sidewalk up behind the, the curb. The east widening option does require two overhead power poles to be removed. We have been in contact with the Shakopee Public Utilities and have learned that those, the lines on those two poles, there is some redundancy in the underground lines, so the impacts of removal of those poles is relatively minor to their system. At this time, staff is recommending that the east widening option moves forward due to the lower, lower risk of cost increase with the project. So what we are asking you for, asking you tonight is to give approval to the resolution before you. And then approval to move forward with easement acquisition on the, on the two properties, which really needs to occur, start to occur here in the next couple of weeks to a month to get that process going. As I mentioned, we do have a public open house meeting tentatively scheduled for December 6th. After the first of the year, we will put together the final design, construction documents through that year. And construction is anticipated to start in 2004, 2014. So with that, is there any questions for Bruce and I?
Any questions? Council Sherman?
So with the east expansion alternative, you spoke early on about longer-term planning, you know, planning out beyond 2014 for the, this intersection. Is there any benefit to that east expansion as you look, you know, 20 years out, 25 years out?
Uh, I wouldn't say there's any difference between the east and west option for, for long-term benefit. The longer term, you know, to get an additional three to four feet of roadway in, in the narrow, narrowing of lanes, we're being pushed outside the right-of-way. So with either option, those long-term improvements are likely going to have greater right-of-way impacts. And because of the, um, and because of the, you know, the, the state of the business community out there, we just don't feel it's justified at this time.
Council Whiting?
You had also mentioned that there's a lot more traffic going north on a Marshall Road there. Would the east option create more of a disruption during construction phases than the west option?
We haven't fully evaluated the construction staging part of it. We're going to be getting into that as we get into the detailed design. There's a lot of pavement out there, and we hope to reuse most of that pavement. Our underground work will be fairly minimal, so I, I don't think there's a, a, a great benefit one way or the other, one over the other, the east versus west.
Council Clay?
The, the future, future build-out, which is going to require a lot more right-of-way. Are we talking about so much more right-of-way that we're, we're impacting buildings that are there and having them buy complete businesses out, or are we just talking about the cost of buying more right-of-way?
That's, it's hard to say at the, at this time. I, I think that what's forecasted for that beyond ten years timeframe is traffic volumes are going to raise to the level that this area, with, with these improvements, you're going to see congestion. The discussion that we had at a staff level with, with city staff, county staff, and MINDOT staff is, this problem is bigger than this intersection. It's really bigger than this interchange. It gets into discussion what happens to seventeen all the way up to one oh one, what happens to seventeen to the south, what happens on one sixty-nine. Part of the discussion we had was with the interchange, there may be some modifications, get the interchange to work better, but if we look at the interchange, we really ought to look at all the options for the interchange, which could be cloverleaf in certain directions to, to give you more longer term, so. I, I don't want to, I don't want to sit here and tell you that, yeah, yes, it means we're going to have to buy businesses. It's just too, or too early to say that.
Wasn't most of the, the long, when we were looking at the maps of most of the long-term, most of it fit, at this intersection, most of the long-term work fit mostly in the footprint of what we've got here, but a majority of the long-term was the bridge and, and work between Veerling and Seventeenth. That's where a majority of that work was, am I remembering that correctly?
But the, the option I think that you're referring to is we had a, a diverging diamond interchange where we invert northbound and southbound traffic through the interchange, and then what we did at Veerling Drive is restricted intersection, where we allowed the left turns, but we eliminated the crossing movements on Veerling Drive. And that, in doing that, we were able to narrow up the footprint, but it, you lost the cross movement on Veerling Drive.
That's right.
And that particular option is what, is, as we talked with county and, and MINDOT staff, they really felt if we're going to look at modifications to the interchange, we ought to look at more options than just one. So that's when the whole cloverleaf started coming in and, and, and what else could be done, and it was decided it was just premature to have those level of conversations at this location.
Got it. Council Clay, I'm sorry, were you starting to say something else? Do we have any other questions? All right, so first item ten C two, entertain a motion to adopt Resolution seventy-two forty-five? Anyone? Council Sherman?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number seventy-two forty-five, Resolution approving the County Road seventeen and Veerling Drive intersection layout.
Do you have a second? Council Whiting?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is the east.
East option.
Option.
Does that work for you?
If you, you look at, and I'll there for a second.
Yeah, I just, as I asked the question, I finally spotted it on here, yeah.
I'm glad you asked though. It is the east widening.
Thank you. Council Clay, you seem concerned about something, is there anything?
I'm concerned about a multiple items, not necessarily this.
Okay, all right. All right, any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, then ten C three.
Really, it's just the right-of-way proposal. In order to get the right-of-way for two parcels and dealing with the federal process, it's quite intense, so we'd ask you to approve a motion to, to execute this extension agreement with WSB for the services as listed in the agreement.
Any questions on this item? Council Clay?
Doing an extension with WSB, although Bolton and MEC, MEC are, is doing the engineering.
Correct. To talk to Chris about this, and it, it's okay to go ahead and, he'll be working with Bolton and MEC. This will be a separate contract that we'll pay separately, but it'd be part of the project. Utilizing their.
This other gentleman here is with?
Property manager.
Oh, okay.
Want to come up and introduce yourself, Ron? Yeah.
He's new here.
Don't forget your middle initial.
And your first born.
Ron Vantone, and with Cushman Wakeville Northmark, I represent the owners for Shakopee Crossroads, that whole PUD. I also have been recently involved with, on the other side of the road, the old Rainbow, which was sold two weeks ago, all right, to a venture firm out of Atlanta that are ramping up pretty fast. So, these guys have been doing a great job. My ownership has two things. One of them, we're paying three hundred and fifty thousand in taxes, you know. There's going to be any increase that we have to push onto our tenants. You know, there may be some pushback from ownership. I spoke with Amy and Paul Radamacher, who are, you know, the, the owners of the Cub Food. The east option is what everybody, you know, it makes sense. The first option was shutting down the entrance into where the Super America was, and that was getting a lot of resistance. So they're on track, they're doing a great job. That's about it. So, the big thing that Cub had concerns about is, they know that there's competition in the area, but as this area grows and that traffic, they have a lot of trailers going in and out, you know, that they just want to make sure that that axis and movement made sense, and I, this, the other one, it was, you know, but this makes a lot of sense, so. And we've been told that there's not going to be any assessments at this point. Hopefully that stays the way it goes.
We can always change that, Ron.
So, yeah, thank you for introducing.
Could you stick around and after the meeting tell just me what's going to go in there?
Where? The, oh, hmm, no.
Oh, okay. Then the other thing is, is, you know, be sure to tell all the people you represent that, you know, it's, it's a privilege to pay taxes, especially in, in this great and fine city of Shakopee, so.
I was there when they were looking at that roundy spade, which is just unfortunate, it's been vacant for so long. It's a good move with what's going on with that property at this point. I've been through the, the receivership and the whole thing, and, you know, I've been managing the Cub Food, that whole facility for almost five years. And my boss before that, and, you know, so we've been at this thing for that property for over fourteen years. Ownership is very understanding. We are working on right now, one of the things that came to light was that there's needs a sidewalk coming off of, over by where Papa Murphy's is.
Yeah, oh yeah, get up to the microphone, I want to hear this.
I happened to be there, and this young couple, two, a dual stroller and mom with one on her, on her back, you know, and they're lifting, and I've got a photo if I could show you.
Oh, we've seen it before, trust me, yeah, it's a problem.
You know, and I say, you know, could you do me a favor, go back and reenact? So we did that, and, you know, and my owners are, you know, they're, it's, we've already done our studies, we know what it's going to cost. It's a pretty big number for a center like that. I, I personally see as the fault of approving the PUD with not having it, you know, but that's down the road, so. So now we're at it, and we're looking for maybe some help, but the ownership was aware of it, and they liked my photos, so.
Dramatic.
I, I'm starting to like you more and more.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I've got kids, whole bit, and I said, you know, it's this, this poor guy with this, those space age kind of, you know, but he's still lifting this thing up, and then I got carriage tracks in my grass. I'm going, geez, you know.
Now, now think about what they have to do when it's, there's snow on the ground.
I'm not disagreeing. Came to our awareness for individual that has an incident with a car and a kid and kind of thing, you know. We are incredibly a proponent of safety. That's the biggest thing that my owners, and I work for Cushman Wakeville Northmark, a global company, in these retail centers, and I manage other retail centers, and these little things do not go unnoticed. Obviously, it's going to be, you know, hit the pocket, but if, there's a way that we can work through it. They want, want to know if we can hold up to two thousand and fourteen. I said, you know, probably not, you know, I mean, so, we are working on it. These guys are doing a great job, and I, I speak for the whole community. So, thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, just for the record, we are not planning any assessments. This is city, county, and state funding, or federal funding.
Very good. And Mr. Looney, you'll work with Mr. Vantone on sidewalk stuff, as I think you already are.
As soon as he lets us know where his plans are, we sure will.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
So basically, back to the item at hand.
Oh, yeah.
Is the right-of-way agreement. Yeah, we, we worked out with Chris that we can do, he's comfortable with going ahead with separate contracts, but they will be working together to get the job done.
So, engineering companies work together better than political parties? Nah, never mind.
When there's money involved, they do.
Most of the time. Okay.
Most of the time.
All right, any other questions on ten C three? Council Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the appropriate city officials to execute an extension agreement with WSB and Associates Incorporated for Right-of-Way Act positioned services associated with the CHA seventeen Veerling Drive Intersection Improvement Project.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Clay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Jogging back through the agenda, making sure I haven't missed anything. Ten E two, Terms of Towing Contract. Mr. McNeil?
Mayor and Council, the current contract with Shakopee Towing expires December thirty-first. You directed us on October fourth to go out for an RFP to get a new contract for that. Chris Wilson has been working on that along with Police Department. She has indicated there's a couple of policy questions. She'd like some direction from you on before we send the RFP out. First would be the location of storage yards. Right now, the contract requires that the lot to where the cars are towed be within the city of Shakopee. We are aware that neighboring Savage, when they did a recent RFP, allowed for other towing companies, if they were within four miles of the city limits, to be considered as well. It may increase the number of respondents that you get if you choose to increase the size of the area. Question for you, do you want to keep the existing language, or do you want to allow for an expansion outside of the current city limits?
Council Whiting?
I think it's a great idea to expand it, to get a little more competition in there.
Council Clay?
I think it's a terrible idea to expand it. We should keep the cars in the city of Shakopee.
Council Sherman?
Come down, come down in the middle here now.
No, I, I think for the benefit and convenience of our residents, I think that within the city limits actually makes sense. I understand the competitive point, but it, I just, if you get your vehicle towed, it seems that it would be much more convenient to be able to acquire it back within the city.
Just for information, Chief and Ms. Wilson recommend, just so everybody knows, that RFP requires respondents to operate within the city limits and that the duration of the contract be five years, so that's the recommendation from staff that we're working with here. Council Whiting, are you strong on needing to be with outside the city limits?
Well, I think it just adds to the level of what you're going to get back. I think you're, you're pigeonholing it to just a couple of possibilities, I think it's one, but.
Will we get any additional by going outside the city limits?
We may double that.
Yeah, I think three.
Perhaps.
Okay.
Support local business.
All right, so does anybody?
So what do you, what do you want?
A motion.
A motion?
We need a motion?
Mark consensus.
Or consensus.
I'll, I'll see what happens. Move the limit to only companies that store the cars within the city limits of Shakopee.
And the duration of the contract?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Less than ten years.
Just, right now, the contract calls for two years. If you expand it, someone who may be thinking of getting into this business might be able to justify making a bid because they'd have more time to amortize their investment. But whether it's five years, whether that would be enough to motivate someone else, I guess that's their call, but the question is, you want to keep it the existing two years or expand it beyond?
All right, so you were in the middle of making a motion?
Yeah, five years.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
That would be eliminate Shakopee and a five-year duration.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, ten F one, Future of Community Center.
Finally.
Got to make it through all the Bruce's different PowerPoints for the evening.
I'm just bringing this up, I don't have a PowerPoint for you, I'm just bringing this up in case there's reference to anything, so that it's there.
I didn't know that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an item that we were asked to bring forward as part of, it was an item that was part of the goal-setting workshop, one of the top twelve, and Mr. Mayor has asked me to bring it forward for discussion tonight. As you saw with the earlier discussion with the donation, there's been some needs for the community, so that's been talked about over the years, as well as a number of items that have come up, not only with the two thousand and ten referendum, that was the most recent, but also in two thousand and five, we had a referendum for the community center that was basically to build the entire campus out at one time, minus a turf facility that was something that came up during two thousand and ten. There also was a referendum in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, for some park improvements along with the second sheet device, so the second sheet is one item that's been talked about really almost since the community center was open in nineteen ninety-five. The need has been there, but over the years, there's been a number, with the growth of the city, there's been a number of needs that have been identified for the community center. Those that were mentioned earlier today were the senior center, second sheet device, Drayland facility, team rooms, as well as items that have come up from a number of different avenues, either through community surveys, referendums, user surveys, needs that we know in the community, growing communities around us, but the indoor pool, aquatic center, expanded fitness facility. We've talked about a second floor to the fitness center that we have, and then the indoor turf facility. Other amenities also had come up in the past, such as childcare facility in the community center, such as Dakota and the YMCA offer, or indoor play areas, which are very common in city recreation facilities. So with that being brought forward, in two thousand and ten, there was a campus plan put together for the community center that was discussed. Now, this is, is very general in that it just labels sections, it doesn't say exactly what they include. So there was during the two thousand and ten referendum. So there was during the two thousand and ten referendum, the senior center was one item that originally, when it was brought forward, it was brought forward as a large facility, including, um, commercial kitchen banquet facility, so it could be rented out for weddings and that sort of thing. Additional to just being the senior center to the one that went forward to referendum was just the commu- or just the senior center part of it, more meeting rooms and, um, daily usage by the residents without the commercial kitchen. But this is the campus plan, um, shows this was done by Ortel Architects in two thousand and ten. Um, it's, this is the existing community center. That's the shaded area. The, um, new second sheet of ice is here. The senior center is added on to the front, changing the look of the front of the community center. Uh, an aquatic center off to the northeast side, and then in the back, we have enough room for an indoor turf facility bubble. Those are the items that were brought forward in two thousand and ten. This is the campus plan. You had in your packet some three D renderings of kinda what it would look like. Um, so we're bringing this forward just for discussion, um, by the city council as to is for the community center campus and the community center future, is this still something that the council sees as what you'd like to see this campus to look for, look like in the future? Um, is there additional changes that you think we should make? Is there trending changes that we should make to our plan? Just some feedback on on the community center in general and the possibility of additional facilities in the future.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, this is an item that I brought up that I'd like to, it was, it came forward in conjunction with, uh, the, um, team rooms and dry land facility and that prod, uh, that project, um, that I would like, and I think that the community needs to know, what this facility looks like when it grows up and what our council priorities are, if any, that we'd like to see have happen out there. And I'm not talking today or tomorrow or in the next five years, but so that we can take and in the, um, lobby, have a picture of what this council believes that the community center should look like when it is finished and what we want to have there, what our priorities are for the community center so that instead of this project, as it has been for fifteen years, having new idea after new idea that come from other places and from Park and Rec Board and from outside groups and things like that, have council say, this is what the light at the end of the tunnel for the community center looks like and what we're gonna go to. So what I'd like to do is just give, um, Jamie direction as to what we think needs to be included in the community center of what was done in two thousand and ten is what we want. Um, then to kinda reaffirm that, send it back to Park and Rec Board, um, have Park and Rec look at it, say, you know, this has changed. I think it would be a better idea to do X, Y, Z, um, and then have Park and Rec finalize what they think it needs to be and then work together with, um, Jamie and Julie to figure out how we get this done and whatever it is when we wanna get it done, so we can have just a goal in mind as to if we're gonna do this by referendum or if we wanna do it by revenue bonding or whatever comes forward for avenues in order to get this done, um, that if a donation were to come in, like we got, um, from the Midewalk and the Sioux community, but obviously much larger, that we'd have options that we know that this is where this piece fits into the puzzle and and can and can take care of that. So that's the discussion I'd like to have tonight, not spend a ton of time on it, but give direction to staff as to what we think the community center needs to have, send it back to Park Board, um, and then it'll come back to us with to talk about final ideas and also, um, financing and how how we get it done dollar-wise, um, that kinda thing. So I, that's just my side of it. Um, yeah, I'll open it up from there.
Well, I don't.
Council Whiting.
I'm gonna go ahead and run with this. Uh, you know, as far as aesthetics, um, that that I don't think, uh, I I like the idea of, I mean, we have a community center now. We're gonna have to add on to it, so making it the initial pretty picture is 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 what we got here. So I do, uh, support the community center. I think it has been a derelict function as being what it was small. I like the second sheet of ice, the the aquatic center. I do believe we should add that banquet facility to make it more functional and the legal kitchen to make it more, uh, cost, make some money on the project. I like the idea of having a picture in the future to, uh, move towards and say, this is our goal. We're going in this direction. And I think if we we talk about that, um, I don't know if there's some funding options we can talk about at a later date, but I I I support it.
Alright, we'd like to go next. Council Clay.
You know, as a as a concept to look forward to and plan for, it's as good as any at this moment, I think. The, uh, biggest question is be, you know, funding it. If if we take the hundred fifty thousand dollars from the community and invest it today, we should have enough money by twenty seventy-eight, maybe?
I think that's on the optimistic side, isn't it?
Well, I'm just talking about the first phase.
Ah, got it.
Yeah, it, funding is is the issue. I mean, do you want to start putting away a hundred thousand dollars a year in a special fund and then just then what brings us down to night, you know, twenty fifty-eight instead of seventy-eight, but, um, I, you know.
Right, that's the conversation we need to get to is is how do we fund it? But this, I think, is, at least from my perspective.
Yeah, if you want something, if you want something to point at and hang on the wall and say, this is the goal or something close to it, yeah, it's fine, good as any.
So if you had thirty million dollars today, this is what you would build?
Well, I think I'd make the aquatic center more aqua and then have a pink roof on the on the bubble, but other than that, yeah, that's.
Okay. Words for you sometimes. Council Whiting.
I I guess, you know, to get into a conversation of how to spend it, um, could could the underspend be part of that? Put into a fund to move in that direction? Is it, maybe that's Julie's question.
But no, but we we always budget to not spend the underspend.
Let's, uh, let's stay away from the financing it as much as we can.
Alright, that's probably true.
That is a.
That could be in the picture of the discussion.
It absolutely can and it'll have to be part of the discussion once we get there, but I would like to talk what we want to finance first and then, um, once we get there, I mean, we we know general terms, how much things cost and what we can and can't do. Like the aquatics facility is extremely expensive to get on and if that is something we want, once all the money comes back as to what makes sense and what doesn't, maybe that doesn't fit, but this is, I'm going perfect picture kinda thing to get us started and then we can take it from there. Council Whiting.
Well, we did talk about two, uh, starting priority points already tonight, and that would be the second sheet of ice with the training room facilities and the senior center. Um, I think it's gonna have to be step by step. But you can't jump from step one to step five, so, um.
Right.
To to me, that's kind of the generalization of priorities.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about senior center. Um, there've been a lot of, uh, studies and things, um, but when in two thousand and ten, when we're going through the referendum, senior center was a big part of the reason why I was so incredibly for getting done what we wanted to get done. But as I've talked to more people and talked, uh, and read more about things, I'm not a hundred percent sold that a senior center itself is the way to go, um, but there are a lot of, there's a lot of really interesting work being done with more intergenerational and and mentoring and things like that with a little portion senior center along with it. And I don't know if that's, I mean, it, the, a place for seniors is the end goal, but how we get there, I'd like Park Board to talk about that.
Multi-functional space kinda thing?
Well, more getting, uh, not just seniors in a room staring at each other kinda thing, but more having, there are, uh, I don't remember where the article, it was in the Star Tribune, uh, the city in the metro, um, is, has taken their senior center and turned it into an intergenerational center. And so there are seniors that are in there, working with high school kids, um, and doing a lot of, uh, different things with people of different ages and it it fills more and it ends up benefiting the seniors more than just a strictly senior center would. Um, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, the name, the name itself maybe is.
Right, exactly. So it's more of a programming thing, I suppose, but just to discuss that at Park Board level as as part of it, I'd like.
So maybe we could have a daycare center, have the seniors watch the little kids for free, and then the money that's brought in from the daycare could go towards the second sheet of ice.
Synergy. I love it.
It's working, yeah. And I did, I did hear a concept, uh, when we talked about the Fire Station Arts Project where, um, they had like, uh, um, a shop area where older generation could teach younger generation how to do projects and things like that. And I don't know, and we start talking about insurance issues, how that all works out, but it could be crafts and different things, so we could kinda conceptualize the arts part of it into that too.
They could teach them how to build an abacus.
An abacus. That's right. We got our first, uh, program, right?
There you go. You're on. Council Sherman.
Um, so a community center is not a revenue generator. Um, the programs within it are working to basically self-sustain and make it cost-neutral. Um, so I just wanna make sure that that is pretty clear out there, that a community center's not gonna drive revenue for the city.
But no, 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 it 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 is a revenue generator. It just doesn't generate enough to pay for itself. But neither does the police department or the fire department, for that matter.
Correct, which are serving different purposes.
Yeah, health, welfare, and safety of the of the public.
Public safety.
Public health, welfare, and safety. You throw them all together, then, you know.
So I've said it before, I'll say it again. I don't think this is a business that we wanna continue to invest in. In fact, we should be divesting from it and pursuing private partnerships where it would make sense. So you talk about intergenerational, so have one of the daycare providers do a contract with like a New Horizon or a Kindergarten and put that facility within the, um, community center in order to accomplish some of the things you're talking about.
Alright, so let's let's talk more about that part of it. What, when you're talking about divesting things from the community center, are you saying that where we're at right now with building footprint, that's where it should stay? And there should be no other things added into the community center or do you think that just the way we run it should be changed and things still need to be added for services or what? Tell me more about that.
So the voters have spoken in the last eight years on two occasions that they do not wanna invest further dollars in the community center through referendum. So that being said, I think if there's any talk of financing and, um, expansion, that needs to go to the voters in the in the form of a referendum. And, um, so again, it was two thousand and five, it was two thousand and ten. And frankly, the very beginning of all this in nineteen ninety-five, um, I don't think this has ever been a graceful, smooth path that this community center has ever been on.
I think that was an understatement right there.
So, um, so I just, you know, calling that out, that it's important to recognize that the voters have spoken. They have looked at all these plans previously and they've said, no, we don't wanna invest in this at this point in time. So currently, it seems that our obligation is to maintain the community center as an asset at the level that we consider that it needs to be maintained at, which would be, um, you know, are there, there's things that we've been doing, so we upgraded the roof this year because that was a necessity. We've done the track resurfacing. Is there, are there carpet issues? Are there other cleanliness issues? Are there things like that that we need to maintain the standard of the community center? So I believe that that's our obligation as a city, is we've, we've built this asset, we have this asset. We need to maintain it to the level that our community expects it. In terms of expansion, you know, that's where I believe the voters need to get involved in and that financing piece comes in. And I, I know we don't wanna like deep dive into that tonight. However, with the current footprint and talking about the ideas and concepts, you know, that you have around getting seniors more involved, are there other services and things that we can do? That's where I think the private partnership, um, opportunity could reside. You know, there's so many other, whether it be nonprofit or private for-profit businesses that run anything that that is on this list and do so in a way that, well, if they're nonprofit, they're revenue-neutral. If they're a private business, they're in it to make money. So how do we leverage people with the expertise to run these kind of businesses where that's not, that's not a strength or frankly, what I see as an obligation of the city, um, to run these type of businesses? You can't go and buy fire service somewhere else. You can't, like, I can't, as a citizen, go contract and say, yeah, I don't wanna use the Shakopee Fire Department. I'm gonna have my own fire coverage. It's not an option. But when you look at these kinds of things, like a pool, ice, um, fitness center, there are options like that. I, as a consumer, can make choices.
There are?
Yeah, I, as a consumer, here in the city of Shakopee can make a choice. I can go to Lifetime. I can go to the Y M C A. I can go to Dakota.
If you if you have the money to spend two to three times as much to do it.
Saying that those are consumer options where that's where I I have issue with us trying to invest and expand in an area that is not the primary area of expertise for running a city. And I understand that there are services that are, that benefit people and people enjoy those services, but as a consumer, I can choose to get those services in many places, unlike police, fire, snow plowing, maybe a little bit more gray. But, um, trying to make my point.
No, I see what you're saying. So, alright, so it's a, we'll take the fitness portion of it, for example. I think that's definitely something that could be looked at for other avenues and other people who could do it more efficiently, especially the marketing and and other side of it. Um, I would be very open to looking at other partnerships, whether that be with, um, I I don't think that partnerships with, and maybe demographics have changed enough that a partnership with Lifetime Fitness or someone like that would make sense now. I would, if it, if there were other partners that would be willing to do that, I would be very willing to look at those kinds of things. Um, I think one of the most real possibilities are like the Y, working with the Y on fitness. So I would love for Park Board to talk about that kinda stuff and see if there are opportunities, um, to, um, outsource, for lack of a better term, ways that we get that kinda work done. What do you guys down there think?
Yeah, I think if you can find it.
Okay.
I don't wanna get into the argument.
That that's kinda what we're here for, is to have a discussion. So I'm sorry that it's nine twenty-five, but we're here to have a discussion, so let's have a discussion. But if you don't want to.
The discussion is about, you know, what is the purpose of, you know, the city government? You know, how much does it supposed to do for its citizens? Is it just have a fi- police department and a fire department and plow the roads and and, you know, do basic maintenance or are there other things that? You spend the money on libraries when you could buy the books that, you know, order books or something. You, um, you know, why spend money on on trails, bike trails and stuff when you can, you know, go somewhere and pay money to go bike on somebody's private property or bike on a public street with the rest of the cars if you can't afford that? There's a, as I've said so many times before, you know, I I see recreation and for the for the public, you know, and the health benefits from it as being just as important to a purpose of a city as is fire and 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 police and everything else. We, we choose as a society to live in these little, in these, on these little, you know, point-two acre, point-three acre lots that most of which is taken up by the house and a three-car garage. You don't, you just have a little bit of a yard to play in. If you're living in a townhome community, you don't have any yard to play in. We, you know, we cram ourselves together and then we keep harping about how, you know, we're, we're overweight, we're not getting enough exercise, we're, we're not as healthy, healthy as we should be, our children are spending all our time on video games instead of being out and active. And we say, yeah, you, you, you should, you should be healthy, get out and exercise more and do all these things. But, you know, if, if you have parents that have really good jobs and you can afford to, you can afford to have a, you know, a membership at Lifetime Fitness and pay three or four times as much money as what you could pay at, at the civic center here or the community center here, um, fine, you know, you got wealthy parents and you've, you've, you're, you're good to go. But, you know, what if you don't? Where do you, where do you go? What do you do? You know, is, is it enough just to um meet basic educational needs for students? Or do we, you know, strive to get them the, the, the best education and teachers and, and things that, that we can? It's, there's all kinds of things that government does that, you know, could, could, you know, as argued that, well, you could do less. You know, you don't have to strive for greatness, you don't even have to strive for goodness, you could just strive for abject mediocrity and do the very basics, you know, or you could, you know, hope for something better for the, the future of this, of this country and this world and, you know, for your children and, and strive to um create cities and institutions and places where, as a community, we can uh grow and become something better than, than we have been in the past and improve ourselves and our society and hopefully our future. Is that enough discussion or do you want to keep going?
Thank you. Council Sherman?
Um, I would just say to some of those points that the government can provide services, but it's always up to the individual as to what services they are going to utilize. And with as many government services, and not just the city, but county and statewide that are offered within the state of Minnesota, if even a, a five percent increase in use of those services um occurred, they would have such a greater impact because it's the individual that's making the decision around what services they're going to utilize and they make a choice. And you can build something and you can create a service, but it doesn't mean that you're going to impact a group that you're trying to target and impact. You talked about income levels and whether someone has wealth or whether someone um doesn't, um, ultimately doesn't impact an individual's choice as to what services they're going to utilize. So I just, I believe that the teaching of a fitness class or um, as an example, is not something that I think the government needs to have a core competency within.
If, if you're saying that wealth or money doesn't affect your life or your ability to have one type of life or another, I'd like to know what color the sky is in your world.
Well, I've certainly come across many individuals throughout my career that have come from diverse backgrounds and have accomplished equivalent or great things, no matter what their background, based on an individual's choice.
Yeah, and I, there's just as many people who have come from wonderful, educated, wealthy backgrounds who have just completely ruined their lives.
Correct, because of the individual choice that they made.
Absolutely. So we agree on that. Alright, hey, we're getting somewhere.
Awesome. Um, alright, so where, um, one last question for you, Council Sherman, is that, so I understand that voters have spoken on referendums and I totally get that. But is, is the way it looks right now in twenty years what you think would best suit and best fit the needs of our community? Is that, is that all we need or do we need more at this facility to meet the needs of our current and future residents?
See, I, I believe that kind of innovation resides within private business. Um, it's not a choice that a city government should be making, so it's hard for me to speak to that because I think free enterprise brings innovation. So for us to sit here and say what we think the community needs in twenty years, um, it's pretty, it's pretty difficult to say what that looks like.
So you're saying if we don't build a second sheet of ICE, someone else will figure out how to do it and make it?
Yeah, if there's a need, if there's truly a need and there's truly um a business opportunity.
So even if that cost is in the private sector, five hundred bucks an hour for ICE time or things like that?
Supply and demand.
Okay, um, I agree with you on that on most parts, uh, that supply and demand is very, is, as a very business-focused person and I like to make money. I, I don't see how this kind of thing happens in the private sector. I, I just don't see a way for it to happen. I don't see a way for it to fill the needs of our community to build, i- if, if an aquatic center is really what we need. I, I don't see any way for that to get done um so that we can have swimming lessons during the winter for our kids. I mean, I don't, I don't see any way for that to happen um at a reasonable cost. And that's another aspect, same way with ICE um and things. And then the thing that we haven't talked about a whole lot is the turf facility on the back. That has proven in other communities, like Plymouth just built one, it is a gigantic revenue generator. Being in the initial cost is what keeps you from doing it, but governments have the ability to um do things. And so I.
Should be, it should be cheap, it's mostly air.
When you, when you say a revenue generator though, are you talking in terms of it's able to pay for its operational cost?
Absolutely.
After the capital investment? So, and so it's, it's revenue neutral essentially? It's not making money, it's oper- it's covering its operational costs?
In Plymouth, it is bringing after operational costs, um, because they're minimal. Um, it is generating revenue for their community. And I myself am not looking for ways to duplicate what I think the private sector can do, but I am looking for ways that we can diversify the revenue that we bring in as a city. And I, I think that by making this facility less dependent on tax revenue is a very good thing for the community. And I think that having a package that looks similar to this goes a long way. It's never going to make money and it's never in, I, I don't think it's intended to make money because it's a service to our residents. But the, the less amount in anything that we do, whether that be this, our community center, fire, police, that we can, the less we can um depend on property tax revenue and figure out ways to diversify how we bring in cash into the city, the less issues we're going to have, what we're going through right now with our budget, with the depressed property values. And we're going to come back, we're going to go back up and we're going to come back into a cycle where property values devalue again at some point. And by the time we get back to that point, I would love for cities to have different innovative, creative ways for doing these kinds of things. So I, I think that this package, when we looked at it in two thousand ten, whether that still fits now, made a lot of sense for improving the cash position of the community center. Um, I also think that by finding a partner, um, especially for the fitness portion of it, can not only um help with cash flow issues, but with um improving the services that we're able to deliver to our residents. So I'm excited to look at that stuff. Anybody else have anything we'd like to say on this? Alright, um, so Jamie, what I would like to have happen from here? And um, anybody can let me know if you have different ideas or better ideas. Is this go back to Park Board and talk further about the things that we've discussed tonight? And see if they are still, with the new configuration of Park Board, if this is still what they feel that meets the city's needs in the future and how we um move forward with continuing to meet the city's needs and uh for what we've got right now and, and future residents that are coming. And if this still makes sense, and then come back to us with um a, a finalized type plan from Park and Rec, but also paths how we get to financing it and different options we have for methods we have for, I'm getting a lot of looks, uh, methods we have for financing these types of things. And if, if referendum, obviously referendum is one option and does that opt, need to be the entire option? What, what does that look like and avenues we have for getting it done? Is that asking too much? Ms. Linehan?
That's why she's here.
I, I, just, just a couple of questions to plan on that. So you're saying you're looking at possible financing if this would be something that the Park and Rec were to look at? Are you looking at going so deep as to have a, let's say, design to build? Kind of a structure so you have some idea of even financially the dollars you would be looking at? Having the Park and Rec Board take a look at something of that degree? Or is the consensus that? I mean, there really are not. It's a very limited option because you do not have the revenue flow in this organization right now with this detail to use revenue bonds. You're going to have to most likely go with a combination of internal funding or a referendum. Any of those are going to require a levy increase, which is the issue that we've talked about during the budget session. So to even talk about that, do you want to go to the detail where you would have real numbers by component? Or do you want to go with just the large potential estimate at this point? Because that'll make a difference on how Jamie proceeds of, do you want it broken down in a composition or do you think you just want the large number?
I would say definitely by component.
And could you do it in twenty sixteen numbers?
Yeah, actually you can because the, the estimates that we are looking at, um, just from interest rates, I mean, things are so flat.
Yeah.
That we honestly could, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely look at, at pieces because I don't see any path forward for us doing the whole chunk at once. I mean, I don't think that, that will happen unless the Clay family gives a very sizable donation.
I keep buying my lottery ticket.
Or do you have another street?
Yeah, oh, well, I'll buy two lottery tickets.
There you go. Um, so yeah, i- is there any, in order to get to that number, do you need to spend any money now for getting to that? Do you need us to?
I think we need to put our heads together on that and just take a look at what is it? But I think more importantly is the general philosophy of we're hearing very divergent plans here. And what is, what is it that council is truly saying, where do you want us to go? I mean, I'm just going to put it out there. As I sit and I listen to this, I have no idea where you want us to go.
Neither do I.
Okay.
And I guess I would just like a, I mean, Jamie and I can sit down and put time into this, we can talk with financial reps, we can talk with different groups that would plan this, but I really have a sense that we're talking such divergent paths here.
Well, I think for tonight's discussion, just, you know, getting the point where saying this is kind of the stuff we, physical aspect, we kind of agree on and that might be a, enough of a, you know, hill to have surmounted in, in one.
Right, and that's where I thought we were, but obvious, evidently not. Um, I.
If you're asking for numbers from her. And financing posi- potentially.
Okay, so maybe we need to add another step to this, to the plan, okay?
I think that would be helpful.
Very good. So we'll go to Park Board, come back for um with uh the components and the ideas, uh, the fi- uh, how much is it going to cost for the components? General estimates, Mr. Neal?
I think we've studied this in the past and it sounds, unless you want us to hire an architect to
No.
Look at those, I think we can update just in general terms, if that will work for you.
Right, as long as this is the package that still makes sense at Park Board level and, and that kind of thing. And then we can take that and look at the components and then figure out the financing from there. So we'll add another step to the project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to have the Park Board take a look at prioritizing some of these uh components?
Absolutely.
Okay, that, that's clear enough. Thank you.
Okay, are you sure that's clear enough?
When, okay, this, I can ask what, uh, what, the financing, I mean, it always comes back to that. And basically, we've got four options. We can get donations, we can pass a referendum, we can take it from cash on hand, or you can raise taxes and that, when Councilor Clay was talking about putting a hundred thousand dollars, in effect, that's taking it cash on hand. Or if you take it, i- if you put the underspend towards that, I mean, that's money that you can't reduce your levy otherwise. So that's also increasing taxes. I mean, there's no other way to package it. That, those are the four choices you're going to have, whether we bring it back next week or in two months. I mean, those, that's the difficult decision that every council has struggled with on this. If you want us to spell those out in terms of what would it mean in terms of if we're going to raise taxes? If, if we're going to build a second sheet of ICE, how much would that mean per year? Want it to operate and amortize it over whatever dollars or over how many years? You know, we can do that sort of thing. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Council Wyden?
We'd want to see the value and how much we'd have to put in, put into that fund to get to this in five, six years on priority number one. You know, what, what is it going to take, what's our timeline to get there? And what other resources can we, can we look at? We're not spending any money except for the time, which we are spending money. So um, we decided that this is our goal, our picture. We take a look at our priorities and then put the timeline in and then we kind of know what the tax value we're putting into it.
Anything else you'd like to say? Okay, um, alright, so is there any further direction you need from us at this point?
We'll bring it back.
Okay, what um timeframe do you want to come back on? Three months, four months?
I'd imagine the Park Board's going to at least, need at least a couple of meetings to go through this.
Yeah, we haven't met in December just because it falls a week of Christmas, usually a meeting does, so.
Early in two thousand thirteen, if that works.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking February, March, but if you want to go for November, that's fine.
I'm not sure that was an option, but.
Ah, got it. Okay, thank you very much. Um, alright, item number eleven, council member reports. Council Sherman?
I have no reports.
Council Clay?
Not tonight, sir.
Council Wyden?
To report.
Um, alright, I fortunately or unfortunately have a lot of things. This has been a lot of stuff the last couple of weeks. Uh, Mr. Neal and I went to uh MLC board meeting where we got update on what's going on with fiscal disparities and the tax revenue um future of how the state makes money, basically, and how their uh, their, their balance of bringing in revenue um will shift into the future and what the best way to handle that is. Um, Regional Council of Mayors, we had a Thrive Met Council, Thrive MSP twenty forty um update and they are having uh very good success with the community meetings and those are going well. CAP Agency's annual meeting was last week and a couple Shakopee residents were recognized. I don't have their names right now, but uh for work they're doing at the CAP Agency and they have a new logo and they have um more solidified missions and goals. And so they're doing a lot of work and um I will uh get the information to Mark to send out to everybody uh as to all that they do. I really had no idea how much CAP Agency does for uh our communities. Um, Tourism Minnesota Association was here last week talking about tourism opportunities in Shakopee, Jackson Township meeting. Uh, Councilor Lehman, Mr. Lee. in Shakopee. Jackson Township Meeting, uh, Counselor Lehman, um, Mr. Leek, Mr. Loney, Mr. McNeil and I, uh, were at the Jackson Township Meeting and we are going to meet again early twenty thirteen, um, to, uh, to take next step in looking at, um, especially sixty-nine, one sixty-nine. And, um, Jackson Township Board is taking back, you know, over the next few months, going to discuss what they look at their future as being and if, uh, how along and with future annexation into the city, um, they are, they, they see their township as being viable and will have the tax base to continue and how that interfaces with the city, um, is doing in the future. Uh, there's ribbon cutting for the Pizza Ranch on Monday and they gave us free food, um, which was very good. And I spoke there, so it's not a gift law issue. Um, then Project Community Connect was today at Oak Ridge Conference Center in Chaska. And, uh, they're expecting five to six hundred, um, people between Scott and Carver County who need help with, um, it's just a conglomeration of different agencies and companies, um, giving free legal advice, haircuts, showers, things to help people just get moving on, um, the right foot in their lives. And it was really, really good. Um, tons of volunteers, um, were there giving their time and doing an amazing job. So that was great. Um, this week I also spoke on Sunday with the Girl Scouts about, uh, government Saks eighth grade today. We talked about campaigns and elections. And then, um, Mr. McNeil and I talked, uh, at the Intergovernmental Working, met at the Intergovernmental Working Group with, um, surrounding cities and the Shakopee Midwauk and Sioux last week. Touched on it a little bit, but, um, we are working toward, um, a, a couple of different things. One that we discussed was, um, a lot closer planning, um, for how we have, uh, planning for growth and zoning between, uh, we're worried about between Shakopee and tribal land, so along County Road eighty-three, as well as talking about how we handle, um, and how we can come to agreements beforehand, um, before land starts going into trust and, um, how we can, uh, better handle those situations when, when they do come up, um, and coming up with a plan so that we know what is happening in general sense with tribal land, um, going into the future. And we, as a city, can say we are okay with this going into tribal land or not, um, and have that planned out in the future so we don't have to go through the issues with opposing, um, things going into trust if it is in a certain area. Um, so we are working on that and it'll obviously take quite a bit of time to get there. Um, but it's one of the first steps in getting that done and improving the communication between, uh, everybody. You have anything to add on that?
Thank you. Covered it.
Okay. Um, alright, item number twelve, any other business?
I did forget, I, to mention that on Saturday, I had the opportunity to, the honor to stand in for the mayor at the Shakopee Fire Department's annual recognition banquet, um, where I was able to, uh, present to Marty Glenn a proclamation and a resolution and for his, uh, twenty-nine years of service.
Thank you for doing that, by the way. They did not want me there. Yeah.
And, and the food was great.
Good. Alright, anything else? Other business? Item number twelve? Item thirteen, uh, motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October thirtieth at seven PM. Counselor Whitey?
I'll make a motion to adjourn till Tuesday, October thirtieth at seven PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, alright, very good. Anyone oppose? Uh, passes unanimously. We are adjourned at nine fifty-one. Thank you, everybody.